I believe we have a quorum, one, two, three, four, five, six people. That sounds like a quorum to me. Tom was on here earlier. I don't know if he has waited and waited back through. We'll call the meeting to order. This is the Bristol Planning Commission meeting of January 4th. It is 7:06. First item of business is to review the agenda for any additional additions, removals, adjustments, if anything. I have nothing to add or change, and I don't know. I would just put it out to the commission and see if anybody else has any comments. Okay, moving ahead. Underneath item two administrative matters, I'd like to welcome our new planning commission member, Jason Heard. Welcome aboard, Jason.
Hey, how you doing? Glad to be here. Sorry, I got my, my video off. I'm in a place with pretty bad wifi right now, but really glad to be here.
Great. We look forward to working with you.
Absolutely.
The next item of administrative matters is approval of the minutes. Entertain a motion to do that.
I move.
Okay, Jeff motioned. Need a second? Okay, Shannon's second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Everybody that is in favor of approving the minutes, raise your hand, say aye, whatever. Okay, anybody opposed? Any abstentions? So that carries. Next item is zoning administrator report. Do you have anything to report, Chris?
Nothing really. There's no, things have slowed down a tiny bit finally. I will, I've got a year end report that I have to run on Friday that I'll email out to the whole board so you can see all the years' activity that went on zoning wise.
Great. We appreciate seeing, we'll look forward to seeing that. Underneath miscellaneous correspondence, I'm just tying together a few nuts and bolts to get them on record here. There was quite a bit of activity in the month of December. And I think most of you are aware, at least aware of most of it. So I did prepare a planning commission annual report for the town report and pass that out for any, any perusal comments. That has been submitted to Sharon. I did meet with the select board at their December 20th meeting. There's a few members that also attended. Thank you very much for that. We had a good discussion with them, talked mostly about the grant process, the intern process. They were very supportive of where we're, where we've been and what our plans are. There is also in the packet some information on the Otter Creek Basin Water Quality Council. They are looking for reps. They have open positions. There was also a short description of responsibilities. I just put that out there. It went out to planning commission and other town boards for, to canvas, and that would be due, they're looking for applications by the 17th if anybody should be interested. Is there any questions or comments or further discussion on any of that?
Kevin, on the water quality thing, that these people would be serving in their individual capacity, right? Not as a delegate or a member of the planning commission, is that?
Correct.
Yeah.
That would be my understanding is they are canvassing various town groups, but it would be as an individual.
So they're not asking for a planning commission rep?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Item three, continuing business. Our Biola grant activity, we had submitted a grant proposal for 15,000 and change. I received a telephone call from Jennifer Lavoy, which there is the record of the telephone conversation attached in the minutes. The state had a few towns and Bristol was one of them that they were looking to coordinate a partial grant. So we ended up revising our grant application. Chris, Chris and Jeff and I and Valerie sort of talked about this little bit and modified it to their, the state request the 9800 and resubmitted it. I think the rash, the rationale and Chris and I worked the budget numbers a little bit, but I think we had a series of meetings with a consultant that, well, I think, I believe it was 10. And there was like six hours per meeting on the consultant's time for prep and whatnot. And we cut that basically in half. We cut that to five meetings to make the numbers work, if you will. I'm not sure. I, I'm not really sure what we need, but obviously if we go forward this thing, we need to be a lot more prudent with consultant time for meetings and preps and that sort of thing. I still think is doable. We still have reserve funds with the town that we could combine in there directly as well if we need to. So that is all resubmitted and it's all verbal yet, but it sounds to me like it's there, they've decided on what they're going to do and how they're going to distribute their, their funding with us participating at a $9800 level. The other thing she really talked about, and you know, it was in, it was in the, the application, but I didn't pay much attention to it, at least I didn't, is if you go through the grant process and you do it within and come up with some actions and implement them within the period, I think it's two years is top, off the top of my head, they actually forgive the matching grant, the matching part of the grant. So if we, if we are successful in adopting regulations within the time period, as far as your grant is concerned, there's, there's the match was forgiven.
But does that, what does that mean, Kevin? The match is forgiven? You mean they?
So they would, they would cover the 10% that we are.
They would, okay.
Yeah. So it's, it's, it's interesting because she kept, they're considering the full amount when they talk about the grant. So the 9800 includes the town's match. So that the grant would be that 9800 minus the 10%, but then again, if you do, if we're all good boys and girls and do what we're supposed to within the timeframe, they'll reimburse the 9800 in a nutshell. So the next steps, so thinking about, I, I had, so we should, I guess we have, we may be counting our eggs in the basket before we, ahead of time, but I, I, I'm not sure. I'd like to hear a little bit about initial thoughts, but I had started with, with, after some discussion with Chris and Valerie, I'd started to refine an RFP. I had started putting one together really quick when we were going through the costing part of this proposal, which needed some reformatting. I haven't done any more with that, with that since then, but I'm certainly willing to draft that up for the next meeting. I guess we would want to do, if, if people are willing, if that's okay with everybody. And I guess like to get a pulse on that. And if there's any other sort of perspective on how, how we should be thinking about going ahead with at least the grant portion of our activity.
Kevin, I just have a short question. As I recall, originally we were trying to keep it under 10,000 because that made the procurement process simpler. So it looks like your wish has been granted.
In a sense, from the state's point of view, we got two, we've got two sets of rules here. From the state's point of view, it makes it a more or less formal process. However, as we talk, Chris and I talked through this with Valerie, there's still a desire from the town's point of view to go through a wider RFP process. So I'm not, I'm not sure. And it's, there's very fine lines with it. So I'm not sure if it's dramatic, but yeah, it loosens up the state's requirements for, for competitive bidding.
Okay.
Anything else? Tom?
I had me myself there. Answer your question. I would encourage you to go ahead and do the write-up that you suggested there, if you would, kind of.
Okay. Okay, so I will take that action and have a draft to peruse next meeting. The next item on the discussion would be the UVM intern. There again, we, after, based on last meeting, we did make a request and, and got a quick response and, and with the comments that we had a really great concept or layout for an intern. The interns, there were some questions about compensation with the last discussion. The interns are provided at no cost. This is a credit bearing course that they take at UVM. So we are, we are not responsible for compensating them for their work. So I, I think that that will, you know, just to make, see that that's clear. I think I, we, but so then that was in mid-December, early December, and then the coordinator was going to get back in a couple of weeks, and I haven't heard from her since. And I rather belatedly pulled her today, and I haven't gotten a response back as to what the status might be. They may still be on break or still organizing schedules or that sort of thing, I suppose. But, but in the meantime, I did put it on the agenda to start considering a few aspects of, of having an intern. And the, the, the one that I, I think, I think is pretty, it's very important actually, is how we're going to manage this intern. And I, I, I don't know if we want to set up a subcommittee. I'm not, Chris, Chris may need to weigh on this a little bit. I think if we have a, a subcommittee of two or three and they're not taking action, they're just coordinating an effort, we do not have to do it underneath open meeting laws.
That is correct.
Okay.
As long as enough, there's no decisions, there's no discussions, and it's just direction and guidance for the intern as far as here is what the tasks and goals are and, and checking in to see what the status is, that wouldn't, that would be fine.
Yeah, it's coordinational. So yeah, okay. So we're, Jeff, do you have a question?
No, no, I was just gonna add, I just looked and UVM doesn't start its classes till January 18th. So they're probably off from home, whoever we would get.
And why not, right? Yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure what the pleasure of, of the board is, you know, if we set up a subcommittee, we define a pint, a point person. We have more, we, we meet more often to review and direct, just open that up for consideration. All I hear is crickets. I'm sorry.
Can't hear you.
Yeah. Okay. So I guess, do we want, do we want a, a subcommittee or do we want a point person or a full commission or, but what's the strategy that people are thinking or would, would be comfortable with? Or something else? Melissa?
I don't think I should speak because I can't do it, but it seems like I think maybe one person would be better as far as from the intern's point of view. Unless there are two or more that work together and communicate at the same time, you know what I'm saying? So that, so the intern doesn't have more than one thing coming at them. That's all. Right now, I just can't take on anything additional at this point.
Appreciate the comment. And that's, that's very me seeing the view that less is more. Jeff?
Kevin, yeah, I agree. I think to supervise one college intern, you don't need a committee. Doesn't take three of us to screw in a light bulb either. And I think probably one person can, can do it.
Okay, so Shannon, Shannon's raised her hand.
You say that, I, I'll be calling you a lot, Kevin, I'm sure. Like, I could do it. I mean, I've had a little experience with it. So with our interns.
Yeah. So is everybody, so do we, let's want to leave it at that than that we would be using Shannon as a point person?
Sounds great to me.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the only other question I have for you guys is, so that you aren't wasting the interns' time and we maximize the short window you have them. At some point, you really need to define clearly what you need them to be doing. If it's gathering data for the characteristics or studies or whatever, in terms of great to go in door to door. It'd be, that's probably the hardest way to gather data and they're, and that's, they, a lot of interns will do that. So that's one of the big things I think you want to hammer down before we, also this person comes to, comes to us and sits on their hands for the first week.
Yep. Appreciate, that makes a lot of sense. Appreciate that. And that's, actually, I, I guess that brings us to the next couple items of the discussion for the intern is, at, at least in my mind, and please speak up if you see it differently, is we are wanting to have this person do a character survey, if you will, that you can break into two subparts, one being physical layout of the character of the buildings in the town, and the other is more soft as to the attitude or the desire, desirabilities, if you will, of town. And I, that is pretty high level, given what Chris just said. But I, I think, you know, if we agree that that's the strategy, then we can start building the tasks, if you, if you will, around those two items. And you know, as, as kind of an overview, we do have this 2007, I think it is survey done that was produced by the regional planning, which is essentially is a character survey of, of, you know, physical things that could be a springboard. And built upon, if there is a desire or belief that it needs to be built upon, that, that's my, those three or four blocks that were surveyed in that report or that effort were the more dense, older part of the village. Which may be fine. We may want to look at a different aspects, different areas of the village with this intern. I think we need to understand that. And you know, there are, that report is, you know, 14 years old and, you know, uses change. I'm not so sure the physical structures have changed. I'm not sure how important that is to us at this point, but I mean, that's another consideration if we're looking at uses and whatnot of our existing data versus where we want to go. Tom?
Just from what you said there, it sounded to me like a logical thing might be to update the previous study, which is over 10 or 12 years old. And then that's easily overcome. Larger part is going to be the values and character then. So I'd say date the first one and on with the second.
Okay.
I guess along the same lines as what Tom just said, I would say that, that 2007 survey I read quite a bit of it, it's very comprehensive. I think we need to include a lot of what has changed since then, that that needs to be looked at. Got a whole bunch of it, but it needs to be included in that, in the more recent report of the, of this physical survey and maybe even the attitude survey. I don't think we want to leave that out, changes.
So with, with those, oh, Tom, or I'm sorry, Jeff?
No, go ahead. You can respond to Shannon first.
No, go ahead.
So two thoughts that I had, and one goes, I think along with what Shannon was saying, is that I'd be very curious to see how much change there's been. The buildings, I think the buildings pretty much haven't changed. There might be a little bit of new construction, but are, you know, are we seeing more big houses converted to duplexes or apartments? Are we seeing more accessory dwelling units? We, I, I just don't know. And that would be interesting to see what the trend has been in that period because that would indicate the needs also, right? Because things respond to needs. The second is, is something you alluded to. My memory of the survey is sort of a survey of the high rent districts, you might say. Didn't include like the trailer parks or anything like that. And I, I think it's, it's a little bit misleading to just look at the blocks, which have a lot of the old houses. And it would be good perhaps to diversify it a little bit and get a better sense of the diversity of housing that we have.
Okay. So I guess that was, that, that was the lead in that I was going to clarify is, is do we, I, I was hearing a discussion prior to, to what Jeff mentioned of, of just confining ourselves to that, the area that that 2007 survey covered, but I'm hearing from Jeff and anybody else that wants to jump in that maybe we, we do some spots throughout the village of, of other areas that may complement that, that area, but the area that the 2007 survey covered.
Try to make it representative of the reality of, of the village.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is that we would continue using that 2007 survey as a base, update it to see what the changes within that area might have been, and see if there's any sort of trends that we can derive from that. And then do a expand, the, expand, the interns work a little bit to do a check and see if that area is representative of the rest of the village and and to take into consideration any sort of diversity that is in the rest of the village at that core, those core blocks may not have in them. Is that fair?
Yeah, I'm just looking at it again. And some of it is, I mean, it covers Rich and Lane, which is the trailer park. But I, I just don't know if we need to just make sure that we're not missing something.
Oh, that's fair. It certainly is fair.
And maybe, and maybe it's not, but at least take a look at it, make sure that we're capturing the, the entire, the diversity of, of housing.
And Jeff, the other thing I noticed, just looking at it, now that you mentioned it, I just flipped through it. It really focused on right here in the center of the village. It doesn't hit things like Mountain Street. We didn't see, I didn't see anything. You get out to like Devon Elaine, Meadow Lane, that, that sort of northern edges of the village. And
Nothing really past Mountain Street.
Yeah, it didn't touch Mountain Street. It didn't, you've got Plank Road that's still technically part of the village. There would be, you've got really diverse, that's more of a rural feel than it is compact village. So it'd be interesting to see what those characteristics are too.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other thoughts or discussion on the physical aspects of a character survey?
The other piece that I don't believe they touched on was the downtown block itself and how we have a mix of retail and there is, and there is housing above a portion of our retail spaces. So those are just, to get a broad scale picture of the whole village, I think it would be a great idea to see a little diversity there.
Okay. Anybody else? So I think that will be a good start. The other, the other aspect is is more of a soft, soft aspect, obviously be a values aspect, if you will, but you know, what, one, one comment has been today, what do you like about the village? Inferring, what would you like to see continued or protect, or not, protective is not the right word, but valued as, as we evaluate things. So I guess there's, there's a couple of aspects. If we're going after soft values is one is come up with the questions in such a way that we can get meaningful data. And then the other aspect that, at least like I'm thinking of, and obviously it's open for discussion is, is how do you go about getting that data? Door knocking, paper surveys, electronic surveys. There's a whole variety of different ways or a combination of all. So again, I just kind of toss that out there briefly and open it up for some discussion. Melissa?
Well, I think it's going to have to be a mix of, of multiple ways of reaching people. That's just, you know, just to give, to, to be able to give people an option to, to connect with us and, and whatever way is best for them.
Yep.
I assume the character survey would be much more time intensive. I mean, the, the value survey rather than the physical survey would seem, I don't know if that's accurate or not. I don't know how much, how much the intern will be able to do is what I'm thinking of that part. They could probably get started on it, but I don't know how, how comprehensive a value survey they'd be able to do.
I, I anybody else have any comments?
I think that facilitating that survey may be within reach and then, but the post-processing of all that data and actually compiling something from it. I think Jeff may be right, maybe beyond the reach unless that's the only thing because things like that take time to put together, organize, disseminate, and then once you get all the responses to actually go through it and compile something from it, that's usually the big part of it. So.
To be honest with you, you may be at the point where the, a second intern in the fall may be that person that you're talking about, Rob, is we, the first round is to, to go out and help gather the, the data. And then the second intern's actually going to sit down and crunch that data, generate the reports and give, and provide the, the commission with usable data.
Good point. I would, I, I certainly don't want to sway the conversation here, but my thought was, is the intern would be more of a mechanical. my thought was, is the intern would be more of a mechanical job, if you will. We, we would, we should as a board look to formulate the questions and maybe the intern may have some expertise that then UVM to wordsmith the questions, maybe is a good way to say it, but you know, make sure that the survey is well rounded and then go off and do whatever mechanics that are necessary.
Oh, absolutely. I, I, I think you all need to, to form the questions and what you want them to ask. The, the intern, I mean, I look at, I think of the intern, and maybe I'm off on this. Um, I look at like V perk every summer. It seems like has interns that go door to door with their little survey and ask me about every, whatever their, their hot button issue is. And I sort of thought that that would give us a chance to gather a broad scope of data from the residents. Because relying just on digital or just on paper or just on mailings or forums, you still get a minimal reaction. Somebody goes that knocks on the door. Yeah, they may be told no by handful of people. You actually get a lot more data that way, it seems.
Tom?
Mulling over some of those comments here, I agree with everything. I'd be certainly having an accommodation or a combination approach for surveys, good. Mail out, let's say posted inquiries for a survey quickly get about two or three percent return, which is so it's going to have to be a combination of those things. And I would also suggest that, oh, since we're going to have to be the ones coming up with the questions to ask. If we set this intern loose on first phase of the survey, which is the physical characteristics. This is a little bit more time to formulate our questions and some meaningful responses.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, good point to Jeff.
Yeah, I, I think that's a very good point, Tom. I was also thinking when, when the solid waste management district sends out surveys, they offer a fifty dollar gift certificate. You know, one person gets pulled for that. So maybe we can offer a twenty five dollar gift certificate to the new bakery and we'll get more responses.
That's pretty novel. Can we do that? Chris is giveaway town money?
Yeah.
Probably, and I was just gonna say, Melissa, I think you said, what I was going to suggest too is use the Bristol box concept, but I, I can't imagine. I mean, that's more the select words per view, I believe, but I do like the idea, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I just don't want to get into some sort of little regulatory snafu, you know? Yeah, I think it's a great idea to give somebody a incentive.
Yeah, I got a hundred dollar gift certificate for telling him what I thought of my trash collection. So.
I act, I actually think, I mean, I don't know if other shopkeepers would feel the same, but I wouldn't mind giving them to my customers and asking them. You know, because it, it getting something in the mail, but if somebody hands it to you and it's someone that you've, like my regular customers that come in, if I give them one of those and ask them, they probably will be more likely to fill it out. And especially if they're possibility of Bristol Bucks, I'm sure that would help.
Yeah.
There was, um, I, I read somewhere, if you, at a successful media campaign, you need to like get it out there six different ways. So any, any different ways we can do it is certainly, certainly valuable.
And there's always those at town meeting day. You know, there's always, there's always that table out there with little surveys on it and people to take the time. Either at town meeting or on voting day, just to take, if they just have to cut, check a couple of boxes and write a few comments. Or I do, I don't know if anybody does.
So I mean, that's a, that's a milestone right there is if we a great place to capture information. If we are going to have in-person town meeting or however that's going to go about at the polling place, I guess. Yeah, that's, that's a valuable point. Anything else? So I guess um, we, we need to develop some questions. Should, is it the type of thing that maybe we all noodle on it and be prepared to bring value questions to the next meeting? To distill? Or is there, somebody have a better idea?
Do we have any samples of what these look like, Kevin?
I, I, uh, I've, I've been involved in a survey with a school. That was done maybe a year, year, about a year ago, plus or minus. Um, and, and certainly that's, that's, that's available. Moncton did a survey. Um, their planning commission did a survey in two thousand seventeen, I think it was. And it looks to me like it was mostly a survey, survey, survey monkey survey, electronic. But it looked like they got some, a lot of great information out of that. So and then the, um, you know, there, there's a few other ones around as well. I mean, obviously the planning commission one from Moncton obviously would more be a more aligned with what we might be thinking for particular questions, but the Mount A one might give a different perspective. I know there was a individual that does that work for UVM, some department in UVM surveying and survey evaluation that developed that one. And um, you know, there's a consideration of putting demographics, trying to get some demographic information as well as um, responses to questions. And then, um, so I can send out, I've got a two or three, I think three different surveys that are unrelated. So some of them might be more of a valuable as far as what they ask for democratic, demographic questions or how they pose their questions as opposed to what we have, but it would might be good to chew on it a little bit as you think about. You know, the questions that we want to ask. So I can certainly send that information out.
And town meeting is in March, right? First Tuesday, March.
First Tuesday in March.
So my, my, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud now that I think that's a good idea to send that material out. We can all take a look at it. And then maybe we need to just get a small group. Uh, you know, a committee of two or three people together to then put it into a format and make, and make sure everybody is, is okay with it.
Yep. So would you do, you're suggesting doing that between now and the February meeting?
No, I think between now and the February meeting, if you can send out the material, then we can all get a look at it. Uh, I don't know if, if there's time to actually put a committee together and talk about it before then. Uh, maybe.
I, Jeff, I think you're going down the right path. I think what you ought to do is at your next meeting, sort of brainstorm, find out, get, get the questions where roughly where you want them to be in a concept and then have two or three people work together as a committee. And sort of finalize it that way. You could email that out for direct input. There's no back and forth, but they can send you direct input back. And then that would put you pretty darn close to town, having a ready for town meeting. You know? I would say, do that. You just want to sort of assign those three people tonight if you can.
So the other thing that, and it, it complicates the data analysis, but um, there's nothing that says if we have to do something quick and dirty to capture that town meeting crowd that it needs to be exactly the same thing that we send out for a more in-depth survey as well, too.
And what it may allow you to do is sort of get a barometer of what people are willing to answer. And with that data, it would allow you to then create a, a more uh, focused approach to your townwide survey that you're, you want to have drawn up by, that you want the intern to, to initiate.
Any other discussion? So is there agreement that we should tap on or look, look for a couple, three people to coordinate? Be prepared to coordinate that stuff tonight?
Sure.
Any volunteers?
Well, since it was my idea, I guess I ought to volunteer. Uh, if I can get one or two other people to help out on it.
Shannon, you look like you're smiling there like a Cheshire cat.
Waiting for somebody else to do it, but I could definitely help Jeff with getting started on that. I, I would be around all except for the first week in February. I won't be in town. But I will be available, I believe, electronically. See how my flight goes.
Yeah, okay.
If I make it there, I might be stuck in an airport somewhere.
Anybody else willing?
Anyone?
I can do it.
Okay, Jason, thank you.
Great. That'd be great.
So, um, so as people, so here's, here's the, if we've got these three people going now, do we as a commission funnel our thoughts between now and February to these three people? And, and then let them present at the February meeting or do we start with a February meeting?
My suggestion, and it's just a suggestion would be to start at the February meeting. Um, it gives you, it, oh, it seems to open up more dialogue than people's dumbing everything in and then just from experiences that you have more interaction with the whole board if you do it that way.
Yeah, that's fair.
So my, my thought, Kevin, is that you send us the samples you have sent to everybody.
Yep.
Everyone can comment to the three of us. And then at least we'll have that information. And then we can discuss it. We can have a few preliminary thoughts and we can discuss it at the February board meeting.
Okay.
Reasonable to everyone?
Their agreement or anybody care? Yeah, I see, I see thumbs up. I see thumbs and icon thumbs and real thumbs. So yeah, we'll, we'll take that approach then. Are there any other, why don't we just go around and summarize and comment on if there's any other thoughts that we haven't thought of, discussed or brought out with either the, the physical consideration or the soft consideration. So I think, um, let me start with you, Rob, and you got any warm and fuzzies about where we're going or further comments or?
No, I, well, I guess yes. I think it's good that we're getting, jumping on this and, and getting ball rolling to be ready for next meeting. To move forward with things since such a short window. Uh, one of the concerns I have is how we're going to distinguish some of the other things that may not be necessarily thought to be included with values if, and be sure that they're going to be included with the physical such as use, uses and some of that stuff in terms of possible short-term rental usage of properties and that sort of thing as well. Uh, that was one of the things that was mentioned in the grant application. I think I just want to make sure that we include all that stuff somewhere and it doesn't get overlooked and we get too far down and go oh, that's probably should have gone in back here or something like that.
Okay. Yep. Good. Great point. Anything else?
Yeah, because one thing for sure is in two thousand seven, nobody was doing Airbnb.
And accessory dwelling units are pretty sparse as well.
Yeah.
Tom?
It was probably mentioned somewhere along the line here, but when does the intern start?
I'm not clear on it. Um, they, they've been on, they've been radio silence. So I think Chris or somebody said UVM's out until mid-January. So I'm, I'm not sure. I get the sense that, and this is, this is just a bunch of talk, but I get the sense that they do a certain amount of class. Class preparation, if you will, before they go out and do their actual work. So I'm not even clear if, when they come back, they'll have to go through some sort of organizational. I guess this is not the word, but.
This is kind of critical in our, our process here because our sense of immediacy is going to be either fast or slow. Let's give us a date. So we've got some time to get our survey questions together.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can obviously send out information to everybody so that they're aware of what's going on. But I, I also think that Shannon um, is willing. He took, she can, you know, either there, she can get them going on the the two thousand seven third survey and start thinking about that aspect of it, which would be, give us time, a little bit more time to work the soft issues, if you will. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And you know, obviously Shannon has a luxury, but bolts than anybody on the, on the board is to she's looking for, you know, a, a different perspective, short of talking to too many people at once. So.
Well, as I said, UVM starts classes on January eighteenth. So it's, I mean, it's unrealistic to expect you'd have anyone sooner than a week after that, I would think, because they have to get organized and give out assignments and so forth. Unless they're coming back early, which I doubt, especially given, given COVID.
Okay. Anything else, Tom?
I think that's, that's my only questions for the moment.
Okay, great. Thanks. Bill?
Thank you, Kevin, and it's good to be with you all. Working my way gradually back into reality here. It's been a little tough lately. You, you all remember this is a issue that I feel is very important is how we what kind of character of village do we want to keep and what do we want to change? But I suppose what I'd say at this point is, is to emphasize that in the last couple of years with the pandemic, most everything has changed. And I think one of the, one of the changes will be cost of living and the cost of eating and growing a business that can sustain itself. And the cost of paying taxes. And I think we've got to be mindful of all those factors as we determine the future regulatory environment, tax environment, school. Best stone for all Vermont. So I'll leave it, leave it there for now. Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, everybody else for your patience. Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, everybody else for your patience and your understanding.
Thank you.
See you back, Bill.
Yeah, glad to see you here, Bill.
Thank you, guys, and thank you, everybody. Guys is a generic term these days.
Melissa?
No, I don't really think I have much to add except to apologize for my dog trying to join the meeting, but I think everybody's pretty much covered. Covered it, except, you know, I mean, just to reiterate that I think it is important to, that we get as input from business owners. As well, you know, for the survey, so that, you know, to really you know, speak to them personally to try to get them to, to, you know, give us their input.
And not all those business owners are residents either, so we would could potentially overlook some pretty important activities in the village or in the town, village and or towns, so, Tom.
I point out too that not all business owners are on the main street. They should be spread out throughout the town.
Exactly, yep. So Jason, kind of, you're drinking from fire holes at the, at the moment probably, but do you have any perspective?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm tracking, you know, I've got a little bit of, of experience doing some character assessments, so I'm looking forward to getting in on it. You know, I'd say Jeff, just let me know when you'd like to get together and huddle. And I think the only question is where could I get a copy of that old character server?
I'll, I'll email you one.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And, and Jason, this is Chris. If, as you're going along here, modeling through the beginning of, of being part of the commission, if you need anything, feel free to reach out. I'm in the office a couple of days a week and I have access to virtually any documentation you would need for anything, so I'm always here for you guys.
That'd be great. You know, I'd love to come by someday soon and maybe just get like a little orientation from you.
Absolutely. I'm here Mondays and Fridays, so we can make that happen.
Okay, sounds good.
Kevin, I'd, I'd like a copy of that survey as well, please.
Okay.
Same here. Good if we could all have a copy so we can relate some questions.
I'll reset it, I'll send it out to everybody. Okay, let me see, Jeff?
Yep. I've talked enough.
Okay. And so have I. So I think we, we've gone around the room. We've got some good direction here and we're off and running, very, very productive. I think if we look, that's, that is, we'll bring to close, I believe, the discussion on what we are planning for our intern work. I had not noted any new business and none was presented tonight, so I think we're at the point of public comment.
Can I do something in the public comments? I had, I had, I had someone ask me a question, so I just wanted to try to address it. Completely off, off to any subject we've been talking about, but the solar panels that are going in. They're, I guess at the Lathrip, the old Lathrip. I don't even know the name of the area.
Yeah, they're going up on top of Cane Hill.
Somebody was asking me if are there any contingencies or are there any funds set aside that if let's say the, the company doing it folds for whatever reason, after they've installed and they've put in the panels, that, any contingencies for that? If that happens, what will the town do?
I'll have to check, Melissa, but I'm 99% certain that any solar project has to have that funding on the front end before it can be, before it'll be approved by the Public Utility Commission.
Okay, and is that, is, and what I would want to know is that funding set aside? And, and who is, who manages that money or?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I can, I can pull, I've got a bunch of stuff on that project on my desk. So I can look into that note and I can shoot you out an email, let you know.
Okay, thanks. The person was just concerned about that and then down the road, however many years, when they need to be replaced, will they be replaced or will it be sort of decommissioned or, or what will happen?
I mean, it's the same, it's the same agreement, I believe, that I get set up with the landfill ones. The ones that Rathbun either has installed or is going to install down on their property down in South 116. But I, I will check to see what the, what, where that particular project sits.
Okay, all right, thank you. Appreciate it.
The, the other, the other comment. And it may not be too settling, but the town has limited involvement with that because that's going through the Public Utility Commission for the state, so it's really a state. It's a state activity, if you will.
Right, yeah, I was just, you know, I was just looking to try to get the information, so that should be, I think that'll be fine, yeah.
Okay. Any other, any other public comment? I think we lost our only public person.
Yeah, you know what's happening? Jimmy drops off.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Melissa?
Yep, I moved to adjourn.
Second.
Rob, seconds? I don't know if, do I have to ask for discussion? Everybody in favor, say aye, raise your hand, something. Looks like it's unanimous. I don't know, I didn't, anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? So thank you very much for a very productive meeting and we'll see. We'll see a few subcommittee activities potentially. And we'll see you next month and, well, I don't know if I, if I took three minutes or I'm giving you three minutes because we started six minutes late.
So just on a real quick one too, that you do have the third Tuesday available to you if absolutely needed between now and town meeting, if you had to have. Yeah, or any, you have the first and third Tuesday available to you of every month. So if you needed one of those for an additional working day, you could grab that if you had to.
Right.
And Chris, is that a problem if we decide that two weeks before? It doesn't need to be the month before, right?
You could, you could literally decide that. We'd need to know a week in advance so that we can publicly warn it and get the agenda out on the website and stuff, but yeah, it's easy peasy.
Okay.
That's great.
Okay, good night all.